Time is six o'clock. I call a meeting of the Etoka City Council's order. Ask everyone to rise as do the pledge allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you would, bow with me, please. Dear heavenly father, we come to you tonight. We thank you, God, for this beautiful day and just thank you, God, for the blessings that you give us, God. And I just pray tonight as we go through this meeting that you will give us wisdom to make the best decisions that we can for the city. And, uh, God, I just, uh, thank you for sending your son down on the cross for us. And, God, I just, uh, pray that we look to you for guidance in all we do. And I pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Now, you know, next meeting, man, COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. Uh, well, welcome to everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. Got a nice crowd this evening. And at this time with the clerk, call roll, please.
Mr. McDaniel.
Here.
Mr. Cheryl.
Here.
Ms. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Poe. Mr. Kathy.
Here.
This is the public comment time. This is anything that's not on the posted agenda. You may address the council at this time. In hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda. Item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting of August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the city manager's report. Mr. Deley, good evening. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my report's on attachment number two, if anyone has any questions.
Questions for the city manager.
Looks like the trip's keeping a lot of business. Gas prices are going down a little bit, so that's good.
Yeah, it's been, uh, it's been pretty busy. You're talking about the other.
Yeah, this, this weekend, as I drove through, every store in town was completely full.
Yeah.
Every, every location, every restaurant that I could see was full. It was a busy weekend.
What happened with the splash pad last week? Something happen again, Danny, or?
Nothing. I don't know.
Oh, it just said repairs were made.
They were made the week before.
Before, okay, okay. Uh, if there's not any other questions, I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on approving or rejecting blanket purchase orders for the month of September twenty twenty-five.
Those are on attachment number four. Those just are regular monthly videos.
I recommend approving.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Item number four, discussion and/or action on to approve or reject the purchase of nine radios through Motorola Solutions in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents for the fire department as part of an eighty-twenty grant in the forestry operations grant. Good evening, sir. How are you?
Evening, council. Uh, that'll be attachment number four. If you look at the breakdown, it's a little different than what the quote is next to it. Uh, there was one more quote added to it, to the local dealershipman's. Uh, it's just only like twenty-eight fifty-five, so we didn't add that into the part of needing approval since that was under the purchasing amount that Danny could approve. We're just looking for the approval for thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and eleven cents for Motorola. That'll give us nine handhelds that we need for our firefighters when they go inside like houses and stuff like that. Uh, this, like I said, in that breakdown will show you about what it's going to cost the city when we get done, so they'll cover most of it. We're just out about eleven hundred, or excuse me, eleven thousand. And we'll, we have some other funding and resources that we can, gonna come up with about ten of that, so.
So the city cost is still one thousand, one sixty-six eleven.
When this is all said and done, it should be about right there.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Any questions?
None for me.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Okay, item five, uh, this is a discussion with the city attorney regarding requirements of State Open Meetings Act and State Open Records Act. And since you see our city attorney is not with us even, we will be tabling this till the next meeting or meeting when we will all be here. I know we're gonna have some absentees on the next meeting, so we'll move this to the second meeting of, uh, the first meeting of October. Let's move it down. Item number six, discussion and/or action on the city of Etoka submitting an application to rezone property located in section fifteen, two south, eleven east Etoka, Oklahoma, from R-one residential to R-two residential. And I believe, Mr. Deley, you said this is something that Councilman Pogue was interested in talking about?
This is the old football field area.
Okay. Uh, do we have any kind of, uh, reasoning for the change without talking to her? See what the plan is?
I would probably let her talk about it because I'm not sure exactly what plan she had.
Okay, then we will also table this till the first meeting of October. Uh, again, uh, item seven, again, also something that the city attorney needs to be here present for, uh, so we'll be tabling that meeting, that one, so.
Well, if any of these people are here for any of those meetings, they probably need to know. They don't have anything in front of them, so.
I believe those folks are here for another agenda item under consent agenda on, uh, on the surfacing requirements. Is that correct? Okay. Um, and then you guys are consent agenda as well for the stage, correct? Yeah.
Good deal.
Which hat do you have on? Okay, yeah. All right, so we'll move to item number eight, discussion, consideration and possible vote to approve the findings from the administrative hearing for the property located at twelve forty-seven Choctaw Avenue, Etoka, Oklahoma. Um, this is the package you have to the side from our code enforcement.
What was the findings of the, am I, uh, code enforcement?
Was to condemn the property and remove.
Okay.
Um, apparently, uh...
To remove the structure. Okay then.
Yeah, so it looks like this is, this has been, they've tried to make contact with the landowner. A couple of different notices, notices of hearing went out, administrative hearing on June fifth, and it looks like there was just failure to show up.
No one's...
There was a individual here that was not the property owner before the meeting, and, uh, they were told the property owner had to be here in person.
Oh, so, okay.
They were trying to do it over the phone and, and not having the property owner here in person to answer questions. We have no way of verifying who that person is. So, uh, my understanding is even though we move forward, if we, if we chose to move forward tonight, there's still a thirty-day period that they can come back, correct, to, to refute this?
I think so.
It's already been condemned and...
Yes, it's already gone through the administrative hearing process, and it comes to us for the final, uh, final approval.
And they didn't, they didn't show up as far as you know to the hearing?
To my understanding, they did not show up at the administrative hearing. Okay.
There have been multiple attempts at multiple addresses to reach out to the property owners, and they've been unsuccessful.
Okay.
So, who, who was the property owners?
Uh, don't know the name. I don't have that information at this point.
His name here, I guess.
Yeah.
Jasmine, Jasmine Solis, okay.
And so what, what were they instructed on the phone when they called?
Uh, no, they, there was an individual here tonight that wanted to speak, but they...
Okay.
Were they renting the property or something?
There was, there was a language barrier between
Got you.
the individual that's here tonight, so they were gonna put the property owner on the phone to speak with us and, so.
Got you.
It's someone's, there's someone in the house, right? Living in the house?
Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Again, even though if we were to prove, to approve the findings of the administrative hearing, they would still have, there's still a thirty-day opportunity for them to come back and sit down with our code enforcement to, and then we'd have to come back and revisit this, but, which is totally fine if they, if they wanna make this.
Do you know, do, do you know the problems with the house?
I don't.
Like, from the picture.
We don't have that, the...
I don't know. It went before Paddy.
That's why I was just wondering what I'm not seeing, because it looks structurally, but, or else it's just really blocked behind that tree. It could look a lot worse in person, but...
You can read, um, Paddy's findings.
I was gonna say, I hadn't seen Paddy's, so I'm glad you got that.
There are some older photos.
How long have they been working on this?
They've been attempting to reach out since July of twenty-four.
There wasn't a lot of notes, just... She said it meets all the requirements of a dilapidated, dilapidated property.
Hmm, here's some older photos to go with.
Okay. Excellent. That's a lot of pictures.
It is, yeah.
I mean, that makes a difference.
That next page.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a different view in those photos?
Yeah, it, it looks like it.
Yeah, it does look a lot worse.
Yeah.
Looks like somebody might be involved in there, but why would you still have an air conditioner? It wouldn't be an air conditioner if it was in the building. Okay.
I'm assuming there's no utilities to the church.
There's no power to the house.
They get top and cut a four foot today. Ron's on vacation. Tim did team over today, so.
And there's some more pictures if you'd like to see them, Chris.
See if they're empty.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, yeah. Cut loose, and a big bow on the roof line.
Can I make the motion to any other questions, comments?
None for me.
I make the motion to approve what the code enforcement officer has, has stated.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the findings of the hearing administration, the administrative hearing?
Yeah, have to remove the structure.
Okay. Have a motion on floor to hear a second.
I'll second.
Have a motion of second. Roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Okay, as we move it down, the business agenda, item C, public requested agenda items. Item number one, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the use of the stage for the twenty twenty-five Christmas parade. We have Heather here this evening.
I'll be your support from over here. Okay, thanks. So, we, um, as you guys know, last year before I was at the chamber, they decided they no longer wanted to do the parade. So, um, take that out. I'm not here with the chamber. I'm here with everything else, second Saturday, all the other things. So, um, they decided they no longer wanted to do the parade, and then you guys did it last year. Um, and so Danny had approached me at, I think, legislative luncheon and asked if I wanted to do it again. And, and I said, well, the chamber won't, but can we get a community effort together and get INCA involved, get ACITA involved, get second Saturday. Adam Kandler from Victory Life is willing to get involved and make it a community thing. Um, and do it on the second Saturday. We're doing the market, so move the market time, so the market's going on before the parade. And then when we met and discussed everything, we're like, well, Port Street is no longer, the plaza is no longer available, so where would we do the announcing? We have a beautiful stage, and we thought it would be really awesome. Same route that it's always been, but instead of announcing on Court Street, they'll get announced when they come down A Street, and we'll try to keep the main presence in the green space, stage area. So we just wanted to get a group.
And I would be moving it to the second Saturday instead of the traditional first Saturday.
Everything together, make it one big community event, so not everyone's running around every other Saturday.
So, is, you wanna use the stage? What do you want to do?
We wanna put the judges on the stage, so they'll be able to see them coming, and that will be our announcing. Our announcer will stand, rather than, because before they would have, the plaza would bring in a stage and have a stage put on the plaza. At least the last two, I think that's how it happened. So instead of doing that, because there's no more access to that anymore, um, just utilizing the city stage.
Do we have a policy on that yet, on the stage?
Working on it. I thought you were writing it.
Yeah, Johnny told us you were.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the use of the stage for the Christmas parade.
I'll, I'll second, but I think we need to make sure we have some type of policy or something, uh, in, in...
I know Johnny is, is working on that.
Yeah, he's...
Okay, yeah.
And I'd like to speak a little to that, too, because on that policy thing, I think it's important that we do have those in place.
Yes.
Because approving this, we set a precedence by doing this.
I agree.
Maybe we should think about this as a case by case, um, until we get the policies in place.
Yeah, I think that's only what you could do, case by case, till, till you get it done.
Until we have the policies approved and in place.
And what, what we had kicked around before was that if it, if it, if the city will cosponsor, is it something community-wise, then we, that's kind of
Yeah, we kicked around, but we didn't.
Yeah, but that's kind of, until we can get that, that, that's how we were just gonna look at them as we go and...
We just, I, I know, I, I'm guessing, I think, from, from, even from when the chamber, before I was there, and from if INCA were to take it, it's too much for one organization to take on, so that's why we thought a huge community effort, and anybody else that wants to jump in from any other churches or anything like that that would like to assist will definitely need the help.
Remember, we hunted you down last year for a judge.
Yep. Luckily, I was there.
Yeah, I'll second. I just wanna make sure that, that we do have a policy, because I don't wanna see somebody here, you know, saying we did this for that, and then you won't do it for us. I, I don't like that.
I don't either, so I do wanna see a policy.
Yeah, we need to have, definitely have that, and that's things that we're working on so we can bring a comprehensive list of those items, everything you, hopefully you can come up with most of the things that you think you're gonna run into, but then it will still be a fluid document that will always need to be amended when different things come up, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but, so we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, should we amend the motion to reflect that at case by case, or can we just go with the original motion?
That would be good with, you good with that, Co? You made the original motion, correct?
Yeah.
So, amend the original motion to show case by case basis.
And we've got several meetings, though, prior to that, too.
Yes.
Um, when is it? December sixth?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, two, it's, it's...
Yeah, we're out. Um, from my experience, business owners start asking questions in Sep, late September, because they wanna plan if they wanna do a float, things like that. So, I, I just kind of rounded up the horses, and I was like, let's just do it and get in front of you guys, because you, you are obviously our first step before we can make any plans, so.
Very good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. McGee.
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel.
Yes.
Mr. Cheryl.
Yes.
Mr. Kathy.
Yes.
Okay, second item, discussion and/or action related to section twelve, two thirty-two paved surfaces required in commercial areas. Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all this evening?
Good.
Uh, so as we went over before, we know that we're trying to...
Do me a favor, just for the record, just state your name and who you're with.
Justin Haner. I'm with Mount View Pentecostal Church. Uh, as we went over before, we know that we're trying to get the new church built. Uh, we've had an opportunity, there has been, uh, a blessing to us. Randy Daniels has offered to donate some land for us to build the new church, right up here, uh, past the railroad track, east of the railroad tracks, about a mile, maybe half a mile east on the north side of the road. And, uh, we just wanna go over that and make sure that everything, nothing changes but the location. Everything stays the same, the same, uh, building, the same everything. We're just new location.
And the land's already resi, uh...
Is that?
Resident, that's right across street from me.
That's, okay, so that's where all the, the loads have smoothed out or been stacked for?
Yes, yes, sir.
Next to the, to the old school building?
Yes, sir.
I know, you know, in the previous site, you know, part of that was remodeling that building. I don't know, you know, if this is a brand-new, kind of, that was a tear-down redo, but on the original property, I, we'd need to probably make sure with our, uh, plan, plan reviewer that that still follows that same
Guidelines.
Guidelines, history.
Uh, yeah, because it'll be a new structure, new, or, you know, the structure will be new, but a new location. And, uh, wanna try to make sure that we're still okay with the gravel. You know, we talked about when the budget's right, we would look into doing the pavement and stuff, uh, but everything will be handicapped. We'll make sure that their sidewalk, you know, whatever we need to do to make sure everything's handicapped accessible, so.
Would they not need to go through planning and zoning?
Uh, that's, have you talked to the code enforcement about the new location?
No, sir.
Okay. That would probably be a step we should take there on that, and let's just make sure before we go this step that it's, it's gone through the, the approval process through our, through our code enforcement.
But it's already zoned right, I think.
Yeah, it's zoned correctly, but previously Johnny had said that just as the reason we had to come before, uh, the council, uh, previously was because it doesn't classify as, uh, meeting the requirements for a variance.
Okay.
So that's why he said that they needed to come before you guys.
Okay, all right, so.
So that they don't need to go through the planning?
As far as the pavement goes.
Oh, the pavement, but they...
Yeah, because they could request a variance with that, but he said that they, Johnny had reached out to some other attorneys, and he said it didn't meet the requirements for a variance request.
I know you said in the previous, at the previous location, that as funds came available, you would look at doing a hard-packed surface at that time, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Um, so by doing this, this doesn't even... Um, so by doing this, this doesn't any, by any way, waive any of the other, uh, requirements by code enforcement, and, you know, electrical inspections and all that, to make sure it meets all the other codes? Would be my, my thing, just to make sure it's a safe building.
Right.
And I know that's what you want, I mean, I know you're not trying to throw something at it, so, um.
So it, has there, has there been a building permit issued yet for this location?
No.
Okay.
No.
So that's, all right.
So wasn't it.
Same set of plans you had before.
Same set of plans.
Just change in the location?
Change the location.
Okay, what's the plan for the current location?
Uh, the, it's eighty by a hundred, is that what you're meaning?
No, where, where you are currently with the structure that's there, what's the plan gonna happen?
Uh, we haven't really decided for sure yet what we're gonna do with that.
Okay.
So.
So y'all, so they, that, you understand that did that, you gotta go before the planning and zoning committee, is it, no, we don't? Okay, okay, I'll get that.
He has to go, but, they have to go with their plans to code enforcement and make sure they do all the proper.
Okay, okay, all right.
Steps there.
Okay, so we can go ahead and make a decision on this tonight? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, cause what, I think what the city clerk's saying is that no matter what we do on, whatever they do with code enfor, uh, you know, code enforcement on permits and things of that nature, it's still, the gravel parking lot on commercial buildings still falls outside of anything in our codes. So we'd have to make a variance for them on gravel par, uh, packed parking, gravel parking lot versus a hard packed surface. And I think what you see on commercial buildings, the, the main priority for that is for fire and life safety, in the event of a fire, that the surface is compacted to the point where if a fire truck was to pull in, you don't get stuck. You know, if you had a large rain event, and it soft underneath, then it, you know, with a concrete or asphalt parking lot, that should be impervious to the rain getting under it, so it would stay hard, so fire, fire trucks, ambulances, things of that nature could access the property. So, that's, to my understanding of why that's in the code the way it is, is for the fire and life safety aspect of it. Now, again, you know, we looked at trying to help the last time with that, and I still feel the same, but it's, you know, I think definitely in the future, it needs to have that, because again, this is, you start getting outside this, it's back to a case by case basis, which we run into, which can cause friction in the future, so.
Yes, sir.
Um, but that's, I mean, they still have to go through all the approvals on the permitting process and, and all that, and the plans have to be reviewed by Mr. Carroll, and those things, so.
Just, just for, uh, ease, ease your conscience, all that has been sent to, to, uh, J.C., is that who you're talking about?
Yes.
And, uh, he's approved every, everything, uh, all the plans, every situation, all the spot of it and everything, he's approved all of that.
Okay.
Already.
Okay.
My only question would be, okay, the current place that you're at has gravel, right?
Uh, yes, sort of, it's, it's older.
So, and that's where you were gonna build the building, was right there with that other building?
Well, it's.
So would the ground be the same, or?
It'll have to meet the same compaction.
Right.
Okay.
The, the front half of the old church now is, is an old pavement piece there, that's part of, you know, it runs right in with the city road. And then around the side of the church, there's, you know, some gravel that had been poured there a long time ago, that's, you know, you can see it when you drive upon it, but there's no fresh gravel, but, yes.
Okay. Well, there's not any other questions, I recommend a present.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, as we move down, is there any council comments?
See you later, guys.
Thank y'all. Hearing none, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion is second, roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe, yeah, Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Okay, as we move into the next meeting of the evening, the Toca Municipal Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. Poe, here. Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
This is the public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda, but before we start that, I'll let everyone know that we have a fire chief with us this evening, and he has told me that our new engine has been delivered and is outside the building, if anybody would like to see it after the meeting, after the meeting's over, so.
He's already used it once, right?
Oh, my goodness.
It, uh, is much needed, so.
Can we drive it?
We do have.
No. I'm answering that for him, no, wow.
You have a special license to drive a car, right?
You kinda gotta know where the gas and the brake are.
What's, what's. It's an automatic? Oh, I, oh, okay. I didn't grow two vans, so.
All right, anyway, just wanted to make that known, so when the meeting's over, if you would like to go look at our new engine, you may, at your discretion. Item, so we'll move down to the business agenda, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the payment to HCCO for payment application number nine in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Okay, out of, out of this, uh, this on attachment number two, out of this amount, we still have a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents left in the ARPA grant funds, which will leave six thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-five cents that will start coming out of the, the loan that we got through OWRB.
Okay.
And that loan was for one billion seven hundred forty thousand.
Okay.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action to approve or reject the payment of invoice number nine on the Edworks project to all engineering in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty.
That is on attachment number three. Anyone has any questions?
I recommend approving.
Roll second.
Have a motion and a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Is there any trustee comments on this one?
I wanna thank the City of Atoka, I had talked to Gene Dotson about, maybe two weeks ago, they had bought some peaches, um, out to Chock Town for, for the City of Atoka, and they bought them on those big, big box, you know, things in a van. And how they expected for us to get those big things out, I don't know. But anyways, the city came through, and they came up, brought their forklift up, and got them out of the van, and.
You were hauling all them peaches?
Uh-huh, couldn't even get them out of the van, couldn't even get in there to get them out of the van.
Where'd they get them?
They were all right, they, they, those are the white peaches, they weren't sweet, but that's all right, you add a little sugar to them, but I want. Yeah, you, you answer, you, I wanna thank Gene Dotson, cause I, I was calling everybody, I mean, they, they came.
I'll tell you tomorrow.
Oh, I sent them peaches, so. Cause I don't know what they, they expected for us to do with them, and the seniors are like, well, somebody get on there, get on and start passing them out.
Wonder how.
And nobody wanted to do that, but I appreciate it, they come up really quick, and got to use the forklift, got both those big old boxes out, and, and everybody got to dig, and so.
There you go, well, good deal.
I'll second her, uh, comment, Gene has an excellent police crew right now, they are, some of, those guys are doing an excellent job.
Well, this was, this is a city yard, too, I remember Gene, I appreciate it.
All of our, all of our folks.
He was in class, and he answered the phone, I'm like, wait, you had?
Well, it, and, I, agreed, the, the police force, fire department, all the city staff, they are out there twenty-four hours a day.
Yes.
Uh, you don't see probably one tenth of what they do in the course of the day, and, and they're very, very, very much appreciated.
They jump at everything that comes their way.
I appreciate it, too.
And they have a good.
Driver says, I'm leaving at one o'clock, no matter what, I said, okay.
I've had to call two or three of them lately, and every time, they are real helpful with whatever it is that I'm needing, so.
Very good.
It's been really good.
Yes, well, we know.
Pass it along, all right.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
All right, as we move into the last meeting of the evening, the Toca City Industrial Development Authority, would you call roll, please?
Ms. McGee?
Here.
Ms. Poe?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Sherrill?
Here.
Mr. Kathy?
Here.
Let's move down, this is public comment time, if there's anything that's not on the posted agenda, you may address the board at this time. Hearing none, we'll move down to the business agenda, item number one, discussion and/or action regarding approving or rejecting the minutes of the meeting on August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I recommend approving.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number two, discussion and/or action regarding accepting or rejecting the Economic Development Director's report.
That is on attachment number two.
Anything you can add?
Almost to approve.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second, roll call, please.
Ms. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Sherrill?
Yes.
Ms. Poe?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Kathy?
Yes.
Item number three, discussion and/or action on the Atoka City Industrial Development Authority submitting an application to rezone property located in block two oh one, Folsom Heights Edition, Atoka, Oklahoma, from R one to R two. Now, is this the one we had also on the council agenda?
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the old extended state property, I believe.
Okay.
Is that right, Susan? Okay.
So is this the one we tabled?
Uh.
Verify that, I may be wrong on that.
Don't let me misspeak. No.
It wasn't?
No, it's a different piece of property. Um, on this item, is Councilman Poe, is this something that you were interested in looking at?
Yes.
Okay. On that, do we have any plans for a reason to rezone that, that had been submitted or planned or anything to that nature?
Not yet.
Okay.
Whereas if that.
Okay, this is the old extended state, so I have been talking to Danny about a possibility of getting some land possibly over INCA, so that way we can write grants and start building again. The tentative plan is that we would build duplexes or triplexes on the area to be able to have low income housing.
Okay, I think, you know, there's been a number of, of people that have reached out to me that are interested in that property as well, and it's been, well, till we figure out, you know, what the board wants to do with the property. There's been a number of those folks that have reached out, so I think we really need to sit down with the city attorney and look at that transparently, to make sure that that, that meets all the right criteria for what we're able to, to do, so. Uh, you know, I, most of the time when we have a piece of property like that, it would go out to an RFP, request for proposal, of what, then we collect those, and then look at each individual request before we, we make a decision on how to move forward with the property. Now, that's just typically how it's done, but we wanna also make sure that we're following all the right parameters for that to, to move forward, so. We can just discuss it tonight, but then I think once we have an opportunity to sit down with the city attorney and, and look through that further, I think before we make any decisions.
You know if you're, what you, what people have been looking at is residential or commercial?
It was residential type properties.
The property is big enough that you would, you could put more than one.
Correct.
So rezoning it to the R two would already have it ready for anybody that wanted to buy it.
Yeah, but again, looking at what those different proposal needs are before we have to modify a zoning change a second time, possibly, to have it figured out, you know, cause they would, in that request for proposal, they would tell us what, they would need that to be zoned as, to see what the board would want to do with that moving forward as part of that request, so. I think that some of them, yes, that have talked to me, were mul, multi-housing. Um, so just looking at those and trying to make sure that that's the, the path forward, I think, makes the most sense. That's my P, that's not a vote, that's not a motion, so I'm just, it's just discussion.
That's good, I guess that's why I was saying, if, if they were, if it was multi, then having it already zoned would just save us a step.
Yeah, and it, and there may be someone that would come in there and want some type of commercial type work, too, so. Um, and we'd have to look and see if that fit the area around it, too, so. So, move this to a later meeting, possibly the first meeting of October, when everybody can be here to discuss.
I won't be here next, next meeting, so.
Yeah, the second meeting, uh, we have a couple that will be out, so it would be the first meeting, so we'll look at putting that back on at that time. Okay. Um, item number four, discussion and/or action on setting terms of lease of property near the existing airport